All right, everybody ready? All right, good morning, folks. Before we get started, I'd like to invite Ms. Laura Brockway to lead us in our opening prayer.
Good morning. First of all, let me just say I'm really grateful to be asked to pray with and for you today. And I had no time to prepare, so I'm going to pray a prayer that we all know, and I'm going to pray it in Latin, the Our Father or the Lord's Prayer. In nomine patris et filii et spiritus sancti. Amen. Paternus, miseru, qui es in celis, sanctificetur nomen tuum. Adveniat renum tuum, fiat luntas tua sicut in celo et in terra. Condemnus tuum quotidianum donibus sordiae et dimittemus debitum nostrum sicut et nos dimittimus debitoribus nostris et ne nos inducas in tentacionem sed liberam nos amalo. Amen.
Amen.
Arise, O God, and let thy enemies be scattered; let those who hate thee flee before thy holy face. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair goes to the quorum as present, and this regular business meeting of the Marshall County Council for October 10th, 2024 will come to order. Some notes on the agenda. We are going to move up the 1020 item for Hepler Broom. That's actually going to be our first item for discussion, following public input, and then everything else on the agenda is going to slide down without objection. All right. So at this time, we'll take public input on any items that are on the agenda. If any members of the public would like to address the council on agenda items, you are most welcome. All right, and hearing none. We've got basically an update on the solar issue. Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Cox have been doing some research on this since our last meeting, and basically wanted to hand that over to you guys.
I have a memorandum to the Marshall County Council from Lorraine White about the economic and decommissioning agreement. Questions pursuant to the ordinance, we must approve the decommissioning plan for SES. Number two, our Commissioner Overmeyer's votes on zoning issues related to the Invenergy project, a conflict of interest. Approval of the decommissioning agreement. Under Section 6H3A, the Marshall County zoning ordinance states, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, a decommissioning plan must be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals and recorded with the Marshall County Recorder." While the ordinance proves, provides that the commissioners must approve financial assurances and bonds, I was unable to find anywhere in the ordinance which would provide them with any purview over decommissioning agreements. Based on this information, I believe the council may request that a state court issue a declaratory state judgment that the Marshall County decommissioning agreement signed on September 16th, 2024 is ultra vires and void ab edito. Conflict of interest. The next question posed is as to whether Commissioner Overmeyer's votes on resolutions and ordinances related to Invenergy's SES constitute conflicts of interest. As the council is aware, Mr. Overmeyer has made clear his position that he does not believe these votes constitute a conflict of interest. Overmeyer signed two separate conflicts of interest forms on September 2023 and November 5th, 2023. Both of these were related to a battery storage lease he entered into on October 21, 2021. Overmeyer signed these agreements prior to votes related directly to battery energy storage. The Indiana General Assembly has enacted a specific provision in the Indiana statute about conflicts of interest specific to zoning issues. Indiana Code 36-7-4-223B provides, "A member of a planned commission or legislative body is disqualified and may not participate as a member of the planned commission or legislative body in a hearing or recommendation of that commission or body concerning a legislative act as described in Section 1016 of this chapter, in which a member has a direct or indirect financial interest. The commission or body shall enter in its records the fact that its member has had a disqualification." Here, it is clear that Overmeyer has a financial interest in the approval of Invenergy's SES as this project directly affects the battery energy storage lease on his land. Without Invenergy's SES, there is no energy to store on his land. Despite this, Overmeyer is still participating on hearings and voting on decisions regarding the Invenergy project. Finally, as an important to note, the court in Perry Worth Concerned Citizens versus Board of Commissioners of Boone County, 723 Northeast 2nd, 457, held, "The court may find a conflict of interest upon a consideration of whether the situation is, one, reasonably calculated to weaken public confidence, or undermine the public sense of security for the protection of individual rights in the exercise of zoning authority. I believe a complaint for declaratory judgment and injunctive relief can be filed on the above issues. I will note the claims of conflict are very fact-specific, and the chances of a positive outcome increase exponentially when it can be shown that a close relationship exists between the board members and the company. In this instance, I would like to see whether Invenergy and the battery energy storage company have a contract or are working in concert for the Invenergy solar project. This was information I was not able to obtain today during my research."
Questions?
Yeah, questions?
So I read this 10 minutes before we met. Obviously, it was presented to us this morning. SES is that stored, or solar energy system? Is that what that stands for? Probably, SES. And who is Lauren White?
Lauren White is someone that I was referred to on some questions that I had, and she is an attorney that is, is her...
She's from Illinois.
Yeah, she's from Illinois, and she's worked in some of the other counties. And I was, she was referred to with, to me with the questions that I had had on what was going on with the decommissioning and the economic development agreement.
Okay, and did the Attorney General appoint somebody? Is this the person he has appointed to look into stuff?
From what I understand, she is, she is doing some work for him. I do not know the extent of it, but yes.
Do you know, Mr. Levin?
So when I reached out to the Attorney General, we were directed to Ms. White. My understanding is she does not work for the Attorney General, but as Ms. Johnson said, she is doing work in Indiana for the various counties. We're not the only county that's had issues with the energy projects or questions about the energy projects, and she is the individual who the Attorney General has been referring folks to for guidance on the questions that have been presented.
You said the Attorney General is referring people to her for guidance? Okay.
So I'd say, I'd say her resume is substantial on this issue. I believe she also said that she's representing, was that Madison County? Madison County has filed suit for an issue related to energy storage, and she's representing them on that.
And Invenergy.
It was against, it was against Invenergy, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Levin, she's obviously said that the council has options that we could exercise. If, if we were to take this path, who would the defendant be in a, in a suit?
Probably the commissioners or the building department. I mean, I have to look at that, but according to the ordinance, the building department cannot issue a permit until the BZA approves the decommissioning agreement. The commissioners approving the decommissioning agreement then does nothing to move the project forward. Essentially tells the BZA, this is something the commissioners will approve. That's kind of put in the cart before the horse. What should happen is the decommissioning agreement should go before the BZA, according to the county ordinance. The BZA should approve it, and then that should go to the commissioners for signature. Ideally, there would have been communication and cooperation between the BZA and the commissioners so that they work together to work out, hammer out an agreement. As you know, President Rohan, you and I spoke to the commissioners and requested that very thing, but also with the councils' input, and the commissioners disregarded us. So this is where we stand.
Yeah. So if, if I get a sense of where things stand currently, the commissioners' view at this time is that the decommissioning agreement has been approved. Is that your sense?
I mean, they've approved it, but once again, that's just essentially them saying, this is what we think we should do. It's, it's got to go to the BZA, according to the ordinance. The building department can't issue a permit unless it's been approved by the BZA. So assuming the BZA, and I don't know what the BZA will do, but let's assume the BZA says, "We don't agree with the decommissioning agreement signed by the commissioners. We want something different. We want, for instance, a letter of credit instead of a bond," right? The BZA can then approve that agreement, and then it would go back to the commissioners again for them to sign, because the one the commissioners sign does not allow a building permit to be issued.
So would, would you say that based on that timeline, it would be appropriate to wait and see what the action of the BZA is, that to see whether or not they're going to take this up?
Well, we've got two issues. So the first issue would be that Area Plan Ty needs to send the decommissioning agreement to the BZA. I have not seen the BZA agendas. I mean, Mr. Jones should be on top of this. I mean, he got funding at the last meeting we had last month, so I'm assuming he's, he's taking control of this, making sure the statutes and the ordinance are all being followed. The second is a more interesting question. If you want to file for an injunction, we can file for an injunction, asking that Mr. Overmeyer not be allowed to vote on future decommissioning agreements. He's already shown that he thinks he can sign and vote on decommissioning agreements. And if the council so chooses, we could put that issue before court and get some guidance from the court before the decommissioning agreement that is eventually passed by the BZA, if it is different from the one the commissioners have already signed, gets to the commissioners.
Okay. I, I do see that Mr. Adley is here. I know we didn't give you a heads up on this today, Ty. Could you speak to the process that's ongoing? Is there intent to, to send the decommissioning agreement to the BZA before we proceed?
I'm clearly just coming into this, so I have absolutely no idea what was been...
Yeah, so just to give you, just to give you a heads up, we've gotten a legal opinion from the attorney who Indiana's Attorney General is currently referring solar issues to. She's not an employee of the state, but she is an expert that when Mr. Levin contacted the Attorney General's office with questions, they referred us to her.
Okay.
Her reading of our ordinance says that the Board of Zoning Appeals must approve the decommissioning agreement before, before a building permit is issued. Obviously, the BZA has not approved the, the decommissioning agreement. Is there intent to, to place the, the decommissioning agreement before the BZA for, for approval?
It would be putting it in front of them, but there's also, under the decommissioning portion of the ordinance, again, I don't have this in front of me, so I'm trying to go from memory. There's sections within the decommissioning portion that it's got to be approved by the county commissioners.
Right, so it looks like it needs to have both bodies' approval.
Right, she says that, right? She says that the financial impacts also need to be, the assurances also need to be approved by the commissioners.
Yeah.
So she and Mr. Adley agree.
Okay. So is, is there intent to, to place that before the BZA for approval?
As a part of their application, yes. Putting it in front of them. We've given them the application.
Okay, so it's a part of what's going to be considered during the, the public hearing?
Yeah, it's all part of their application. We would put the signed document from the commissioners in there.
Okay, so obviously, if the BZA, so I guess my question is, will the BZA be asked the question and presented with the information that it is up to them to determine whether or not the decommissioning agreement is appropriate and to endorse it before they consider the application? Is that question clear enough?
When an application goes before the BZA, they're reviewing that application.
So they're not going to...
The way you phrased that was odd.
So it's, the, the ordinance says, "Prior to the issuing of a building permit, the decommissioning plan must be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals and recorded with the recorder."
Okay.
And so is the intent to submit the decommissioning plan for approval as a separate question?
As a separate question, no. It would be all a part of the same application.
Okay.
It's one of many development standards and pieces to that.
Will, will they be given the information that if they are not in agreement with the terms of the decommissioning agreement, that they have that as grounds to reject the application?
The BZA has any ability to add reasonable conditions to that or deny the application, its approval, just like any other variance case.
All right. Any other questions from the council?
I just want to, I just want to add that in the decommissioning agreement, as well as the EDA, they have the same section in there that says, "Company may, without the consent of the county, but upon written notice to the county, assign or transfer this agreement in whole or in part to any or all of its rights, interests, and obligations under this agreement, any affiliate, parent, or subsidiary entity, any direct or indirect affiliates as part of the corporate reorganization, any entities inquiring an equity interest or any direct or indirect affiliate, a public utility, any other company, or any other entity with comparable experience to the company in constructing and operating a commercial solar facility in the United States in a net worth of a minimum of $25 million, as confirmed by audited financial statements as of the most recent fiscal year and comparable financial statement." So even in their decommissioning, they're making it very clear that they are keeping their option open, that they can file to be a utility, and they can also sell out to a utility. If they file to be a utility, they can then take our people's land, our farmland by eminent domain. They can also file to be tax exempt and not pay property taxes. That's exactly what's going on in Madison County. Madison County won, and Invenergy did an appeal, and it's now at the state level. So they made it very clear, that's their playbook, that's what they're planning to do as well in Marshall County. They're keeping that option open. If they can't file to become a utility, they can always sell out to a utility, and our people could lose their land. Our farmland could end up being gone, and who knows what property taxes look like? They may pay property taxes, they may not.
Are there any other procedural questions for Mr. Adley?
Well, no, not for Mr. Adley.
Okay, I think for your excuse, then.
Correct.
But I do want to go over this letter. I think it goes further than that because, under the conflict of interest section, second paragraph, I'm just going to reread it, it says, "The Indiana General Assembly has enacted a specific provision in the Indiana statute about conflict of interest. Code 36-7-4-223B provides, 'A member of a planned commission or legislative body,' that would be a commissioner, 'is disqualified and may not participate as a member of the planned commission or legislative body in a hearing or recommendation of that commission or body concerning a legislative act.'" Now, you know, then you start looking at, were the votes invalid? Were the votes that were two to one should have been construed as one to one ties, you know? And, and perhaps the moratorium, who knows what the policy alterations could have been had this disqualification been made? So I think there's a lot to look into.
Well, and it's...
Take it back to the ordinance itself that was signed, or that was put from the, he was on the planning commission, and he voted to send it over. So the ordinance itself...
Right. Well, and it's beyond that because even after he had entered into this conflict of interest, he was nominating and voting on other members who were appointed to the planning commission.
Even before. I mean, he, he had a conflict as of September 2023 and November 5th of 2023, and did not, or he had his, his contract in 2021. October 21st of 2021 was when the contract was signed with Buss for his battery storage. And he didn't sign a conflict of interest until September 2023.
Well, and it goes back even farther than that.
So he was allowed to place people on boards.
It goes back even farther than that because the other issue becomes, was he leveraging his knowledge of the coming project to sell his land at increased value to, to people who had the, the expectation they were going to get solar leases in the future? So this is a, a big thing to unravel.
Mr. Levin, where would, you've probably answered the question about where would the complaint be filed? Is that locally in, in the courts, or is that with the state?
It will be filed in the courts.
Okay.
Yeah. I also understand we have a deadline. We have 30 days from the time that the commissioners sign those agreements to challenge them. Is that correct?
We do.
And so we, this is probably the last time that we will meet before that deadline passes. So, what's the will of the council?
Well, we can't do nothing. So I'm going to make a motion that we file some type of injunction to have the courts at least look at this under a certain type of complaint. So I don't have the exact language of what that complaint would be, but, and we may need to discuss that, but I'll make a preliminary motion to take some action.
What...
Can you just let me work with Mr. Rohan, and we can, we can get a complaint together?
How many days do we have until our 30 days are up?
I don't know. When, when do they sign that?
16th. We have three working days. Can you make it happen, Marcel? Work your magic.
Sure, absolutely.
So you would like to meet with...
I'll just, I'll just work on a complaint, and I'll just, if you give Jesse the authority, he can, he can approve it.
And if we, if we need signatures, we can all come down here and sign if we need to separately, right?
Yeah, you can sign.
Can you get it filed in three days?
When, when was the decommissioning agreement signed?
16th.
September 16th, yeah.
We have roughly till October 15th.
Three business days.
Three business days.
Three business days.
Yep. So we've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, a second by Mrs. Cox, to empower the chair to work with Mr. Levin to file an injunction regarding the decommissioning agreement on the conflict of interest. Is there debate?
I guess my, my biggest question is what happens after we file this? Is this, I mean, do we kind of halt what we're doing until we hear, or like, what's our steps in the meantime?
Well, we continue until we get guidance from the court to do otherwise, right? And the BZA hearings and stuff are going to go forward unless the injunction's put in place. The BZA can still hear the decommissioning agreement and the application that was submitted, right? According to the ordinance, they're supposed to review the decommissioning agreement anyway. So if they don't like the current decommissioning agreement, the deal that was signed, they can request changes of the decommissioning agreement. As Mr. Adley said, they can request changes to everything else that's in that application. So it's being submitted to the BZA as one solid application. It's up to the BZA members, according to Mr. Adley, to break it down into the separate pots, right? Decommissioning agreement, zoning, et cetera, and review those individually, and then say what changes they want to see or approve them in mass.
And so they'll, they'll definitely be plenty of opportunity to make sure that the folks on the BZA are, are fully aware of their, their powers to, to do that, so...
Right, and then, I mean, it is, it is conceivable that the BZA recommends a decommissioning agreement. The applicant agrees to, to the changes that the BZA requests on the decommissioning agreement, and then it goes to the commissioners. Then, assuming that the court say, Mr. Overmeyer has a conflict, then you need the other two commissioners to, to sign off. So, I mean, nothing changes from our standpoint. It still, still goes forward. It is conceivable that even with Mr. Overmeyer's conflict of interest, the other two commissioners could sign off, and, and it gets approved.
Very good.
Something dawned on me. A memory just got recollected. The decommissioning agreement, that was drafted by attorneys that the solar company paid for, is that correct?
I don't know if they paid for them yet.
Yeah, I don't know. My, my understanding was that it was in the, it was in the agreement that the commissioners struck with the solar companies to be reimbursed for the costs, but I didn't, I don't recall exactly the final version of that agreement or what it was.
But Barnes and Thorberg was the attorney's hired.
Yes.
And, and solar will reimburse or pay that claim, am I not mistaken? And you were asked also...
I believe they were supposed to.
You had asked to be maybe privy to some of those conversations, did you not? I mean, I, I, or did they not? Because I remember that you were somehow left out in the dark, were you not?
I, I was. I, I, I had submitted some information, and I had spoken to Mr. Clevenger requesting that I be included, that the council be included in the review process and be able to comment and give information in our viewpoint to the commissioners, but that request was not honored.
Commissioner Clots also had requested, that originally for the decommissioning and the road agreement, that a group of individuals be brought together as a board and reviewed it within our county, and instead, the other two commissioners just voted and sent it to Barnes and Thorberg.
Okay.
Who does a lot of, extensive work for solar energy companies.
Okay, well, this, this confirms my original motion even more in my mind, so...
All right. Is there further debate from the council? All right, hearing none. The question is on the motion to file an injunction against the decommissioning agreement and conflict of interest. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the motion is agreed to. Next on the agenda, we've got the quarterly update from the Marshall County Museum, Sandy Garrison and Mike Miley. Good morning, folks. Sorry to leave you waiting.
How's everyone today? We've been busy, so we have a lot of... Marching to it. Thank you, Mike. So while Mike's passing out, I think I can probably go ahead and get started. I'm Sandy Garrison. I'm the director of the Marshall County Museum, and with me is Mike Miley, president of the Marshall County Historical Society. And as Mike mentioned, there's a lot of paper. Your packet's really thick this morning. That's partly because we've really had an amazing summer at the museum. We've been very, very busy, lots of programs. It's, you know, really great to be back in full swing. We had the first historic home tour that we've been able to host for folks since COVID. It's actually sold out in two weeks. It was very well attended. We participated in Latino Fest, we had kids programs, we had our monthly brown bag series. In your packet, there's also a copy, as always, of the MCHS newsletter, plus an article that we were invited to submit for the Association of Midwest Museums publication. This was really exciting for us as museum nerds, but, you know, really quite an honor for a relatively small institution to be included in something like this. Our project was featured alongside projects for museums much, much larger. So there's a copy of that in there for you guys to take a look at when you get a chance. And our summer events ended with a staff in service on September 17th over in Bourbon. As I mentioned last time we visited, particularly seriously, we call the museum, so whenever we get the opportunity, we try to be out, out and about into the communities. And for our staff, being able to see things in person where things actually happened really deepens the level of service that we can offer to the community. There's just nothing like being able to see things in person. And since we were just in Bourbon, the story I want to share with you this morning takes place there. So Tori, that's your cue. I think you have our first picture. Gives me a chance to catch my breath, too. I might not be able to see it. I think we might actually be missing one, too. The first one is, there we go. So the Bourbon Fair was the first fair actually established in Marshall County, and it started way back in 1872. It was held in the fall, actually probably about this time of year, and it was such a big deal that school got out for the day. And so you can see all the kids marching here off to the fairgrounds to attend. Some actually went, it was whole classes along with their teacher. Just imagine the excitement that this must have been for people. I mean, it's such a small town to go to such a big thing. In, in 1891, the Bremen Inquirer had this to say, and I have edited this way down, way, way down. "It will be impossible to describe in detail the many attractive features of Bourbon's make the heart of fellows who've been raising scrub stock chock full of envy. The implement department contained the regulation wares in way of labor-saving machinery that is necessary for the systematic tickling of productive soil." This is my favorite. "The floral and art hall is like stepping out of this old prosaic world and into a fairyland, an Elysian bower of beauty whose radiance dazzles the eye and beauty charms the soul." Got a new fix, another picture then for you. But the article concludes without question, "The most remarkable thing about the grounds is this fine racetrack. It is constructed on the most approved plan, and the very fact it is only a few weeks old and has had such splendid time made upon it shows conclusively that it is destined to be one of the very best in the state." And we're going to fast forward to 1900 and the Argus reflector had this to say. "The Bourbon Fair for the year was the greatest and most successful fair conducted by the association to date. On Thursday, vast throngs of people simply overwhelmed the officers in charge. The number of single-ticket holders sold on just this one day was 6,400."
Wow.
"This does not include children, season ticket holders, exhibitors, caretakers of exhibits, racehorses," that made me a little curious because they actually had these tickets for the racehorses. I don't know how that works, "nor stockholders." But the treasurer of the association estimated that there were more than 10,000 people on the grounds in that single day. So just, just think about that. Estimates at the time actually were that at times during this period, there were 14,000 people in single-day attendance figures. That was over half the entire population of the county. It's just amazing and, and I just always have to think about, you know, for people, what, what that must have been like? You know, these were folks who really often didn't travel and for this day, the world came to them. It must have just really been amazing to go to this. So racing continued to be one of the highlights of the fair for years and I have one last photo. Oh, there you go. Photo of the, you can see that, that just the density of, of people. But racing was one of the highlights of the fair for years and years. But by 1960, the, you know, enthusiasm for the, the cause was starting to fail. You can just imagine how much life in the county had changed in those almost 100 years. The original goals of the fair were to improve livestock breeding, to promote agricultural and industrial interests, and to provide good, clean entertainment. And it seems like for 90 years, they really did just that. One last picture for you. It's an ad of, for the fair in more recent times. But by 1963, the fair had come to an end. The fairgrounds were sold and Triton School Corporation actually bought them. And so that is where the school stands today. We're actually fortunate to have a number of artifacts from the fair in our collection. And so when you come and visit, you can see some of them on display in the HCC. I did want to remind you, hopefully you got Sue's email, that tomorrow is the state presentation of the award for the HCC, so I hope you guys can join us if you happen to be free at lunchtime. And if not, then you'll come and visit us sometime soon. But that brings me to the end of our report for today. I don't know if Mike had anything he wanted to share.
Sandy alluded to it, but we were very fortunate. There's a family in Bourbon, I don't want to give their name out so that people aren't, but they have an unbelievable collection of, of Marshall County and Bourbon history. If you know who they are and have the opportunity to go see them, you should really do it. I mean, their collection is just incredible. Love to show it to you, but you hate to have everybody in the world know about it, so take advantage of it. They'd love to show you.
They do three buildings. It's amazing. It's super well organized and they, they do take guests by appointment, so they said they would be more than happy. If you're ever interested, we can hook you up.
Yep.
I personally love the Bourbon Fair, so when I grew up, I'm a generation removed, but my mom, I have several pictures when she was a kid there and my dad, too, was from Bourbon and they met as kids there.
Awesome.
And my aunts and uncles. And then my mom's dad and grandparents were stockholders all the way through the early 1900s, so I have some of the original paperwork from that, too.
Yeah.
All the way, I think through the 1960s.
That's great. Thanks for sharing that. Yeah, it just, it just seems like it must have been an absolutely magical event.
It was the event.
As always, we thank you guys' support of the museum and have a good rest of your day.
Thank you very much. Well, we certainly have passed the time at which it's appropriate to have our tax abatement hearing for B and G truck conversions. At our last meeting, we established economic revitalization areas, that was that the term? But I know Mr. Falsted did a site visit out there and has an update for us on, on that.
Just like here. Allergy. Anyway, on Monday, I met up with Mr. Hildebrand and the good folks out there at B and G Truck Conversions. We had about a two-hour meeting starting at eight and lasted until 10:00. It's a very impressive place and they do meet the requirements that need to be met for a manufacturing facility to get a tax abatement. But I'm more impressed with the kind of the culture they have out there, their philosophy towards their employees, and I think it's an overall good thing for the county. This will be a good thing for us.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. I'm, I'm familiar with their investment group. This is the, the same folks, Marlon Stutzman and his partners that are working on the, the Barnes and Nappany and a lot of other projects around north central Indiana, and they definitely have Marshall County values. They're the, the kind of company that we want to see, so I'm, I'm excited about this.
And I'd like to also add, I'd like to thank Mr. Hildebrand for bringing this, getting this kind of together for us and presenting that, presenting that to us.
Yep. And thank you to Mr. Levin and the auditor's office for getting all this paperwork together as well, so. So we need to have a motion to open a public hearing, is that correct? All right.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson, a second by Mr. Falsted to open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public that would like to testify either in favor or against the tax abatement proposed for B and G truck conversions? All right, Mr. Hildebrand. Welcome.
Morning. Good morning.
If you guys could state your names and titles for the record, please?
Greg Hildebrand with Marshall County Economic Development Corporation.
Ree Pitterd with Maguire Sponsored, representing B and G Truck Conversions.
Yes, and we'd just like to speak in favor of the tax abatement and thank you for coming out and it was a very productive meeting and one of the things we've learned is that this is actually just phase one of what they have planned for that site. And as you know, the, the group that they're, their investment group, they're well-leveraged for, for the future expansions also. One of the things we want to address is IDIM, you know, not IDIM, INDOT. There's all these different acronyms. INDOT has plans for the 10 and 31 intersection. I think these plans will have some sway in how that is addressed. You know, you're talking 60 additional employees just in this first phase. You're also talking an increase in traffic from deliveries and, and that. So we'll make INDOT well-aware that as they're making that decision that, you know, something needs to be done on either frontage roads or those county roads. One thing we would also like to ask is if, in that seven-year phase in abatement, if we could adjust those percentages just slightly. I had talked to the auditor, she had prepared both confirming resolutions with either, I think if you look at the one that we'd like to go to, it's just a little more aggressive. I think Adam can speak to.
I will say, I did not forward that on to the council members. I thought you had spoken with them prior to and I thought I was the last step in that, so they only have the original.
Oh, okay. If, if, if you look at what they'd like to do is the one that you're seeing goes 185, 71, 57, 43, 29, and 14. The one that they'd like to go to is a little more aggressive. It, it goes from 195, 80, 75, 55.
Can you, can you read those numbers?
Oh, I'm sorry. 95, 80, 75, 55, 50, and 40. And I think Adam, one of the things that, in this first phase, they're looking for some cooperation through the county. Quite frankly, we are beneficiaries of where some of their other development is. Those counties are not quite as business-friendly and this is one of the ways that we can welcome them to our county if we can increase those percentages just a little more.
And I'd, I'd also like to add, talking with them, their plans, their plans would be for phase one to be complete within 36 months and if that goes well or better than well for them, they'd already be jumping into phase two. And currently, production-wise, they're pushing through 60 units a year. They've did a soft verbal commitment, their goal's to hit 1,000 units per year, which is huge.
Yeah.
Including a pay bump for the current employees by about 33% and that's what their future employees coming in would be making at that point, starting. It, it, I think it's a good opportunity for the county, especially down around Argus, and it also adds, gives us ammunition to argue to keep them from cutting off Argus for Matzus.
And, and some of the jobs they'll be bringing in. Presently, B and G didn't have a lot of engineering staff or, or supervision. It was all welders, very important jobs, don't get me wrong, but this is some higher level staff will be coming in as far as engineering staff, things of that nature. They're also looking at bringing in interns, some of the schools, getting them involved in that, so, and doing much more training. Presently, they do some in-house training, but that would be a big part of what they're doing. Phase two, they talked like the 100,000 square foot building would be part of phase two. Anything we can do to, to welcome them to the county, I would appreciate.
All right. Looks like Mr. Harmon just crunched the numbers over there.
And so this just mean a number crunching real quick. The first proposal was roughly a 50% reduction on average for the first seven years, right? My calculation has this down to almost a 71% reduction the first seven years. That's just for the other council members to consider, so. I like the first one better, I gotta be honest with you. So.
Anything we can.
What's that?
Anything we can do to help, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for the council for, for these gentlemen?
Did you have anything to add, Reed?
No, great. You covered it. I just thank you guys for your consideration.
All right. All right, thank you.
All right.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to weigh in on this issue? And hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Johnson, a second by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor closing the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed. Debate from the council on the abatement.
I'm gonna ask Jim a question, maybe even Tori. Traditionally, what do we do with abatements? So is it 50%? Because the abatements that were enacted for Hu Yins and Faulkner were done before we got here. Does anybody know if that's traditionally a 50% number? Is it negotiable? Everything's, everything's negotiable?
I do want to touch base on this because even though that would be 50 and the other would be higher.
Right.
I think when Adam went down there and he saw how friendly these people are going to be to Marshall County, as it pertains to wages, I think the difference between the 50 and the 71 is insignificant because the amount of money feeding back into this county is going to be much greater than that. So I think that the vendors and all of the other people in the county are going to get the advantage of that. So I don't think, I would, I prefer to go with the second one.
Yeah.
I have met with these people before and they are very friendly as far as business is concerned. They're going to do nothing but increase, you know, employment in the county. We have been wanting employment to be increased here as far as economic development is concerned. I think by giving the advantage of the additional tax here, it's going to more than pay for itself. And that's my input.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, Jim. I think the, the thing that was so substantial to me is not just adding new jobs, but the, the willingness to increase the salaries of their existing employees with this project and that's, that's impressive to me, so.
And you're going to have additional people coming into this area.
Yeah.
They're going to be shopping for everything imaginable.
I think, too, when you look at it, this is a great opportunity for Argus in particular to have some advancement and some growth. We can help spur that.
All right.
Argus has been, excuse me. Argus is very, very progressive as far as economic development's concerned. Drive down through the little town of Argus and see what they've done. I'm embarrassed to say, I'm from La Paz and when I drive through there, it kind of reminds you of a ghost town now. Am I correct?
Okay.
And I think that they're very progressive in that area and I would like to see us do whatever we can.
Yeah. Any other debate from the council?
I'll just speak up. I'm, I'm going to support the first one and vote against the second, and this is no offense to you guys and, and the council obviously is going to speak on their own behalf, but I just kind of feel that the, the, the process last month was set forward. We incentivized, we rewarded, and I certainly want to give you guys my congratulations for moving forward, but I think, you know, taxes are necessary evil, we all have to pay them. So I'm going to stick with the, the first numbers, but the council obviously has a mind of their own and I'm going to vote against the second one.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the more aggressive proposed tax abatement for B and G trucking.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mr. Falsted to approve the tax abatement as amended with the, the new document provided by Mr. Hildebrand. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion is agreed to, 6-1. All right. We've got the planning commission, Mr. Adley, with a request for professional services. Morning again, Ty.
Morning.
All right.
Can I get you to ratify the resolution from the last time because we did not have the resolution at the meeting?
Okay.
When you did the ERA.
So this is Resolution 2024-7?
2024-7. If I can just get a vote for ratification on that, please.
All right. Council, you see before you Resolution 2024-7, which we approved preliminarily at our last meeting, can we get a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, a second by Mr. Patterson to adopt Resolution 2024-7 as presented. Any debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. All right, Mr. Adley.
Okay, so before you today, you're suggesting to come back before you in the next meeting and talk a little bit about professional services. The battery task force is looking at trying to bring in some different professionals to be able to provide their insights, those sorts of things, and sometimes those do cost and so we're wanting to make sure we have the funding for that because it's not exactly in our budget for those services. And so we wanted to kind of gauge the flavor on potentially looking somewhere between $5,000 and whether or not those dollar figures would be supportable or capable through the council.
Mrs. Johnson, you're, you're on the task force. Can, can you speak to this?
I, yes, I'm absolutely in agreeance with this simply because there is a lot of people that we do want to hear from on setting this ordinance the correct way, the, the way for the people. So yes, I am absolutely for this and, and what he needs, I will support.
Okay.
Where would we be looking to take that funding from?
That's my question.
General or?
Obviously general fund money. I don't know that we could have any other source on it.
Not a thought in my head, but I'm sure.
And this would be something you guys would want to get started on pretty much right away or?
Yeah. The sooner fundings in the bucket, the more we can line up the different subject matter experts to come in. Right now, we're just kind of happy to have those that are free to provide their services to us, but if we can land some additional subject matter experts that may cost $1,000 here, $1,000 there, I don't know what their associated speaking costs would be to come travel, those sorts of things. So that's where it could be looking at a $5,000 initial cost and then potentially coming back around should we need additional funding for additional experts.
Okay.
So without knowing what those costs are, and we've attempted to request those costs from a couple of different individuals, but with no response coming back on that, it's hard to give you a quote on. but with no response coming back on that, it's hard to give you a quote on what dollar figure that could be.
All right.
You said five thousand initially, you think, just an estimate?
Could be an option, it's a matter of five or ten, I mean, you're already looking at almost halfway through October. So the odds of us coming back this year would be slim. Let alone the fact that you only have two meetings after this, without trying to get some sort of special meeting to come in. I think five thousand dollars would be a reasonable start, and potentially could be coming back first of next year.
And so if I, if I'm understanding this correctly, Mr. Lubin, we've got sort of two options on this. The council could decide to pay for this on our own. And then there was also the option that Invenergy would be, or was that the case? You spoke with somebody, they were willing to reimburse us on this, is that?
This is battery, right?
This is battery, it's got nothing.
So they're separate?
Separate, okay.
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, this would be council cost out of general fund, so an additional appropriation for the November meeting probably into your.
Right, so that's kind of, this is a gauge to figure out what I'm filling out, and for how much.
The resolution, resolution of support on it, then?
Just to, yeah, just to vote to support so that he can submit an additional for November, and we're, we're still good to advertise for November at this point, right? Yep, so.
I'm feeling seven thousand. I think we should give them seven thousand to work. I don't know why.
All right, I've got a mo, I've got a, is that a motion?
Yes, had a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we place seven thousand dollars in professional services, so that way they can move forward with funding the battery task force as they are looking in to try and create the best ordinance possible for our county.
And this is in the planning commission budget, and professional services, is that what you're?
Or do we need to create a line item for battery storage?
Doesn't need to be.
Task force.
It doesn't need to be, that's up to you guys, I just want a confirmation of where the additional is coming out of the motion.
Yeah, because I can't, I can't imagine that they would have anything else that they could spend this on, right? I mean, in the normal course of your business, you guys don't really do a lot of professional services stuff, so I mean, it would be.
Right, there's not a whole lot out of that line.
Yeah. Okay, I've got a motion?
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mr. Patterson, to support Ty requesting an additional appropriation of seven thousand dollars into the planning commission's professional services line. Is there debate? All right, I just, I'll say I appreciate the way that you guys are handling this ordinance in particular. And so it, I'll support it as well, so. Hearing no additional debate, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
Excellent, thank you, we'll get that pulled together and turned in.
All right.
Thanks, Ty.
Yep. All right, we've got the highway department, and Denise has got a request to apply for a grant. Oh, all right, Jason's back.
I just came back from vacation, so.
All right, welcome back.
So we're applying for a safety grant, it's a ninety-ten match. Literally applies just like Redwood or federal project. Basically just looking for support to apply for the grant. It's fifty thou, or five hundred thousand, and it is pavement markings. Our match on that would be fifty thousand, and we looked at local roads and streets for our match money.
Okay. All right, any questions from the council?
Ninety percent, that's pretty big.
Yeah. Well, let me just say, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. I know we've had another successful paving season, and I'm looking forward to seeing our, our new PSL ratings here at the end of the year.
We did have a good season.
Yep, so, hearing no additional questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, and a second by Mrs. Cox, to support the ten percent match on this federal grant for striping. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the motion's agreed to. All right. Yep, thank you. And we've already covered the next item there, so we've got council items.
Can we make a five minute break?
We're, we're gonna knock this stuff out real quick, so we'll.
Oh, okay, the minutes and all that?
Yeah, and then we'll take a, we'll take a brief recess before we move on to the third reading of the budget, so. We've got ordinance twenty-two-four-four parenthetical seven, an ordinance establishing new funds. And this is one of those where Indat wants us to set aside money for bridge projects. And so this is gonna be specifically for Bridge One-O-eight on Seventh Road, Fund Eighty-One-Nineteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, and a second by Mr. Patterson, to establish the fund. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the ordinance is agreed to. All right, we've got additional appropriations, and as is our standard practice, we advertise all of the additional appropriations and transfers as required by law. We post a copy of our consent agenda at the back of the room so that all members of the public might have the opportunity to review those. And then if the, if the items are deemed non-controversial by the, by the council, we approve those en masse. Each member has the opportunity to remove any items for individual consideration. We do have about five hundred thousand dollars in additionals today. And just for public reference, the majority of that is coming out of grant funds, which is, there's two hundred and forty thousand dollars for a bridge project, which is a non-budgeted item. So it's not like we're just throwing out a quarter of a million dollars of money that we didn't budget. So this is, this is a regular item. And then Solid Waste is asking for an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year because they have, they have increased their hours out there from thirty-five hours a week to forty, and that's money coming out of their own funds, so that's not county general fund money, so. Does any member want to consider an individual item?
I'd like to pull out EMA.
All right. So let's, let's consider that separately then.
Can I come forward on that one?
Yep, Mr. Garner?
Councilwoman Cox, if you wanted to say anything before I start speaking, you can go ahead.
Well, you can go ahead and speak, I actually spoke to Zach as well at Dispatch, and he is our communication specialist. He gave me a call inside a conversation with him as well, so go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm asking for five thousand dollars to automate the county's tornado sirens. So I got a quote from the company that's gonna do that at about thirty-one hundred dollars, but that was a couple of months ago, before we could get this around, and that quote expires after thirty days. I don't know if the rates are gonna raise, so that's why I'm asking for a little bit more. But this would allow us to have those sirens activate as soon as the National Weather Service issues an alert. It takes out the human error that would exist from our dispatchers having to go in and manually select which sirens they're gonna set off. Because a lot of times the warnings are these narrow polygons that don't include, so we don't want to set off Culver's when they're not actually in the warning. It would also help because if they're flooded with calls, as is usually the case when there's a tornado warning, they don't have to be also wasting time going in and doing that. So I'm asking for a little bit extra on top of that thirty-one hundred, just to be safe. I will make a pledge here that whatever money is not spent on that, I will allow to roll over at the end of the year.
All right.
All of those located, add Zach.
So the county controls all of the sirens around Plymouth, Bourbon, and Culver. The rest are all manned by the fire departments.
Okay.
And what was, what was your concern, Mrs. Cox?
Okay, so after speaking to Zach, I was asking about grant money, is there grant money available? And he said that that's something that he was actually willing to look into, and he was actually kind of speaking to Jack about it. He said there may be some grant money available next year. He said that the sirens are working perfectly right now. Everything is working perfect, there's no, it's not that they're faulty, we don't need to upgrade them. This is just going to be software, it's gonna automate everything, so it's gonna take it off of dispatch and actually automatically pushing it through. It'll just be automated. It will just be Plymouth, Bourbon, and what was the other one you said?
Culver.
Culver, so all of our other towns actually are gonna continue to push it, because they're not interconnected. And, and Zach said he would absolutely continue to look for grants next year, and this is something that we could push off for a year if we'd like. Let them search for some grants, and then if not, we could consider it next year.
Do you think it'd be possible to work with automation in all the cities and us to have a unified system?
So we could approach the cities, they're gonna be the ones who want to fund that. There's just, and this is all stuff that's happened before I was around, but there's a reason that certain towns are not set off by the county, and there's a reason why they want to have their own autonomy to do that. So it's something we could look at, I think it'd be a good project for everyone to be automated, but that requires the fire departments buying into that.
Is it a matter of the town of Plymouth could go in and go half with us, since Plymouth is the main one?
I suppose we could make that request, it's not all just in the city of Plymouth, it's also rural center township. I know, I think the county and union township kind of split costs when they put those in, so. It's something we could look into, and I have looked into grants as well in the past for this, and haven't had anything that's come up specifically for this one. But I can keep looking, if that's the will of the council.
You said Plymouth, Culver, and Argus?
Bourbon.
Bourbon, okay.
So did you have a motion on that, Mrs. Cox?
Can I ask you another question? So, something about the cost again, you said something about thirty-one hundred, is there a number of budget for this already?
So, to be frank, my budget is quite small, and there's no money that would be worth transferring over to cover this cost, so.
I didn't know if it's in a separate, you know, fund that you could utilize as, I mean, a dedicated.
No, that was my first thing I looked at, was trying to transfer. But just with how much, how little money is there? I mean, my operating budget this year was about ten thousand dollars, so.
And so you think the total cost of this is less than five thousand?
Yes, and I, I will pledge that whatever is not spent on this project, I will allow to roll over at the end of the year. I just wanted to go high in case the quote went up a little bit more, but I can't imagine it would jump that much.
And then the last question, so they're manually, you know, pushing the sirens?
Yes.
And so any past, you know, human errors that, that you can, you know, give us as evidence, or, or no?
So, one of the examples is, we had the tornado warning this, that was issued this summer when Tippecanoe had their tornado. They gave us a lot of lead time on that, the National Weather Service did, and it was about thirty, forty-five minutes from when the warning was issued to when that line of storms actually hit my house in Plymouth. This would allow it to have that communication terms, I'm not, Zach probably knows more about this than I do, but it would allow it to pulse in that it would go on for three minutes, off, go on for three minutes and then off, to allow the public to understand, you know, the warning has not lifted, so keep taking precautions. Because if you sit there for forty-five minutes in the middle of the night, sirens went off once, and then you're just sitting there, you're like, well, maybe the storm's not gonna hit. And that is something that we can do already, but again, we were flooded with calls, and that's something that we're not really doing at that point, so.
I guess my question would be, is if there is a grant that's coming up, would there be a match to that anyway? You know what I'm saying?
It just depends, I mean.
So, you know, because you're a five thousand dollar grant, that's a fifty percent match.
A lot of counties pay for this through a hazard mitigation grant.
Okay.
We spent all of our hazard mitigation grant money on the last cycle contracting out the hazard mitigation plan. And so that money was not able to be used for anything, any local projects.
When will that be re-upped?
Huh?
When, when can we apply for that again? Can we apply?
It's a five-year cycle, so it'd be twenty-twenty-seven.
Wow.
By the time that comes out again.
But there might also be other grants that.
There are, yeah, there can.
For Zach, he said there could be other grants.
Okay.
Jack, real quick.
Yeah.
Will this software, that fee cover for any future towns we might bring into that? Or is it a fee per town that gets connected to it?
So I think this cost only accounts for the towers that we have right now.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion?
I want to make a motion to support, because I believe that it's a small number, we have the money on hand. I don't want a disaster in May, April, before the grant can even be applied for. And so I think it's worth spending a little bit money. I'm gonna trust Mr. Garner to be a good steward and, and, and keep his word if there's any extra. My motion is to approve the five thousand dollars additional request.
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon, and a second by Mr. Fallstitch, is there debate on the motion?
My only other question would be, I'm sure there's a failsafe that if something went wrong and they're screaming all day long, that we could manually shut them off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any additional debate? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the five thousand dollars for the communications upgrade will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the motion's agreed to.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, are there any other items for individual consideration, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda en masse?
Motion to approve.
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mr. Patterson, to approve the rest of the consent agenda. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the consent agenda is agreed to. All right, we've got the minutes from our September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson to adopt the minutes from the September twelfth meeting, second by Mr. Fallstitch. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign.
I'm gonna abstain, because I came in late.
All right, so the, the minutes are approved, six-zero-one, with Mrs. Cox abstaining. We have the minutes from our September twenty-sixth special meeting. And is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Patterson, a second by Mr. Masterson, to approve the minutes from the September twenty-sixth meeting. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the minutes are approved. We've got an appointment to the Culver Union Township Public Library. Amanda Potter comes highly recommended by the library director, and she will be completing the, the unexpired term of Jenna Fairchild, who resigned a few months ago. And the, the term will end on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mr. Masterson, to approve the appointment, is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the appointment is confirmed. We have a Lubin Law invoice, don't have the September Senator Dalton invoice yet. Nope, still don't have it. And so the, the Lubin Law invoice, can you scroll down just a little bit there? Is in the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty dollars for the month of September. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mrs. Johnson, to approve payment of the Lubin Law invoice. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the invoice is approved. We've got our twenty-twenty-five meeting schedule, which looks like it's identical to what we had this year, with regular meetings on Thursday, on third Thursday evenings at six PM. And our budget sessions at nine AM on August fourteenth and September eleventh for first and second readings on the budget. Is there a motion on the agenda, or on the meeting schedule?
Quick question to approve.
Quick question, real quick. That Thursday meeting, is that actually meant to be at six PM, or is that supposed to be zero-nine?
The reason, we're, we're meeting this morning at nine-thirty because of an evening conflict, it should be different next year, yeah. So I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson for approval.
Second.
A second by Mr. Harmon, is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the schedule is adopted. All right, we've got ordinance twenty-two-four dash twenty, the twenty-twenty-five budget for Marshall County Solid Waste. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mr. Patterson, and is there debate? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign, and the budget is. All those opposed, same sign, and the budget is approved. We've got ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-one. Okay, we're gonna get to that later. We're gonna skip over that, all right. Uh, we've got, uh, ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-two alpha, the job classification and, uh, compensation maintenance plan procedures. Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Falstich and a second by Mr. Patterson to approve the, uh, glob- job classification and compensation plan. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the ordinance is adopted. We've got ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-two Bravo, adopting job descriptions. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mrs. Cox, a second by Mrs. Johnson to approve the, uh, job descriptions. Is there debate?
My only question, this is what we talked about before with the last meeting, correct?
Right, mm-hmm. Yeah, we're just, we're ratifying the decisions that we made on this at the September meeting, yep. All right. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the ordinance is approved. We've got ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-three, the twenty-twenty-five salary ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson, a second by Mrs. Cox to, uh, approve the twenty-twenty-five salary ordinance. Is there debate? And hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the ordinance is adopted. All right.
We would like that. Make a motion, we take a ten-minute recess?
I think we need fifteen minutes to refer reset, right?
Got it.
All right, so we're gonna take a fifteen-minute recess. Uh, we will reconvene at the falling of the gavel at approximately eleven A.M.
I will not schedule myself to work this meeting.
I am fasting, so.
You are?
I'd probably just email it to you.
You have fingernails?
Email back.
I did.
All right, folks, we are, uh, we're ready to reconvene here. Regular order. All right. We are back in session. The only remaining item on our agenda for today is, uh, ordinance 2024 dash 21. Um, we're gonna take some third reading cuts on the county budget. Mr. Harmon, committee report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know we want to kind of go down in order, so I'll try to do that. Councilmember Cox will come in as well. She has, uh, some, uh, details that I don't have. County commissioners, buildings and grounds, uh, was there?
Just page numbers.
What's that? Okay. I'm just going by the index. Page nine is building and grounds.
Okay.
Did you need him?
What's that?
Did you?
No, but I, but I, I want to be sure that we got the right number there. Is the second reading, uh, numbers, the final numbers. I, I thought there might have been some discussion on that, but I want to double check.
And we talked about clothing and uniform. I talked to him since then, and he looked back and he said there's actually all the carpets for the, the courthouse are included in that budget for him. Um, and also they've started, they're trying to like pay for boots for two of the maintenance crew every year. Um, so he just asked if we would just leave that alone, and I said, I will pass that off.
Okay, and so that looks like it's page?
Yeah.
Page nine, and we did nothing with that, so, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. All right. I'm gonna go down to the additional cuts that I have, and I'll try to do them in order, Tori, for you. Highway Department. Page 12 on my printed copy. Uh, we had met as a budget, uh, committee and, uh, worked with Jason on improving some numbers here. Sodium chloride, which is salt, we're gonna reduce it down to ninety-seven thousand seven six, I'll wait for you. There it is. Ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one point six four. There's a reason for that. We're trying to expense out.
We can't do change, so we'll have to round up or down.
I'm sorry?
We can't do change. It has to be round up or round down.
Oh.
Do you have one except change?
Round it down.
Round it down?
I, I'm not saying round it up or down. I'm just.
Right.
Okay, ninety-seven thousand dollars, is that?
Ninety-seven thousand, seven sixty.
You just can't do that.
Oh, pennies, gotcha, gotcha. Change, change. That's that type of change. Okay, gotcha.
Looking at a reduction of approximately fifty-two thousand dollars.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So are you going ninety-seven thousand, seven sixty-five or seven?
Seven sixty's fine. Yep.
Is there objection? Hearing none?
Okay. Help me out on road signs. I should have asked that. Did we increase that from twenty to forty in our budget hearing? Did you guys have that?
I did not have that.
Okay.
But I had a deduction in paint.
Okay.
Of ten thousand.
You had a deduction of paint of ten thousand? Okay, thank you. Paint will go to forty thousand, thank you.
Was the, the road sign conversation, was that about one of those mobile speed limit signs? Was that, uh?
You know, my notes had forty, but I had a check, I had a question mark by that, so.
I have lots of, I don't know if this was actually taken into consideration, but we had also, um, zeroed out stone, gravel and aggregates because we thought it could come from ARP. Uh, is that a question? I'm questioning that. I don't know. That was just a note that I had made.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I, I skipped over that one. So let's, let's go back. Paint is forty thousand. Go up two lines. Stone, gravel and aggregates, we're zeroing out to zero. There's other funds where that money can be taken. We had to cut quite a bit from this budget because there wasn't gonna be much left in cash balance if we didn't do this.
Is there objection to that two-hundred thousand dollar reduction? Hearing none.
Professional services dropped to sixty-seven thousand dollars from seventy. Thank you. Next line down, subcontractor goes from four-hundred thousand to one-hundred thousand. Community crossing goes from five-hundred thousand to four-hundred thousand.
And I would say, just because of how much we had to cut out of this budget in particular, I think it might make sense in the future to put that community crossings grant match in the commissioner's budget and take it out of the general fund as opposed to trying to pay for it with Jason's money.
Well, that's, that's absolutely fine for the following. Um, we're just trying to just use some of his cash balance here that he has. Highway equipment, again, looking at next year, we have a big, uh, number in another fund, so we're gonna drop highway equipment down to zero from two-hundred thousand. Doesn't mean he gets zero, just means we're gonna use another fund.
Is there objection? Hearing none?
Uh, garage equipment?
Did you jump to another page?
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry.
I don't know where highway equipment's at.
Page fourteen, sorry about that. Page fourteen, sorry.
I had it on page thirteen.
Sure. We had talked about zeroing it out and using another fund.
Take from Kim Cap.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I flipped the page.
Yep.
My page number, I'm on page fourteen, that's the way mine reads.
What did you have for garage equipment?
Yes.
Eight thousand?
Yep, eight thousand for garage.
A two-thousand dollar reduction on garage equipment?
Yep.
Okay. I had, back on page thirteen.
Okay.
I had repair buildings and structures. I had a three-thousand dollar reduction on that from ARPA.
Yeah, I didn't.
Is Jason here? No?
No.
Say that again, you had repair?
I had, I had made note of repair buildings and structures, a three-thousand dollar reduction making it three thousand.
Uh, I do have a note from that.
Okay.
There was a reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Angie.
Mm-hmm.
So a three-thousand dollar reduction making that three thousand dollars, okay?
That's all I have for highway. Uh, Nicole, do you have any thing else that you recall or?
I mean, look for my red.
Thank you.
I don't believe so. That's good.
That was all I remember as well, so.
Okay. I'm gonna drop down all the way to page thirty-five, voter registration. I did see that the commissioners approved, uh, the ARPA fund, uh, request, so voting equipment will be zeroed out from two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred to zero.
On what page?
Page thirty-six, the very last, very last line.
There we go.
Oh, yeah, voting equipment, last line right before the totals.
So reduction, a reduction of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred.
Yep.
Is there objection? Hearing none?
Okay. We gotta skip the page, uh, flip the page, uh, quite a bit to page seventy-six. Dropping down to Superior Court Number Two?
Hang on, hang on, let us get there.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at my index too, so when I say flip a page.
Okay.
We gotta flip many pages. Page seventy-six. Um, I had a nice discussion with the judges on, I believe it was Tuesday, uh, trying to find some savings there. Mr. Aldrich, would you please come forward and, uh, for once, I get to be on the bench? And, um, he graciously, uh, came forward to help out our budget, to, uh, really give some nice reductions to help out. Other than these, um, recommendations by Mr. Aldrich, which he's presenting today, I have nothing for Superior Two, but introduce yourself.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Harmon. Uh, thank you, council members, for hearing me out today. I just wanted to make some preliminary remarks about, uh, the Superior Court Two budget as well as these proposals here today. Um, Superior Court Two, I'm not sure if many of you know, is our high-volume court here in Marshall County. Uh, our court handles the traffic and misdemeanors, your ordinance violations, uh, and starting January one, uh, small claims is returning as well as the evictions. Uh, I have prepared, um, for each of you, I'll give this to you afterwards, a, the trial court statistics from 2023. Those indicate that Superior Two had three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven total cases in 2023. Uh, the rest of the courts combined, uh, those, uh, those, the total number of cases for those three courts only averages out to a little over a hundred more than our court handles alone. Moving into 2025, uh, with small claims coming back, we're adding an additional six-hundred-and-eighty-seven cases between small claims and evictions, bringing if our total 2023 statistics move forward, uh, and stay the same, our case number's up to four-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four, which is, uh, if you deduct those from Superior Court Three, um, and the other courts, would bring our total caseload alone eleven-hundred more than all three other courts combined. So that's, that's the basis for, uh, our needing of additional staff. Uh, that's the, the basis for our budget being larger than the other courts. Our staff and a little bit of history here, used to be, when we had small claims previously, six staff members plus a security officer. We are at now five staff members plus a security officer. I'm not asking for an additional staff member. I'm asking simply to keep our staff intact so that we can handle the increased caseload with small claims as well as the high-volume court as it is. Um, and, and for this budget cycle, I have provided each of you a copy of basically an Excel spreadsheet of cost cuts, um, that I believe are appropriate for our court and Superior Two. Those cuts, including the seventy-three hundred previously cut, total thirty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, to highlight a few of the, the larger cuts would be the Unified Law Library. Uh, that was previously Judge Colvin had law books, uh, and pocket parts for his research as well as for access to the public, whereas I'm moving more to a online system for my, my viewing of, uh, materials and the like. Uh, I highlighted as well on the, on the budget as I proposed, uh, to the, to the council members here, wages for the, uh, security officer. That security officer is for all four courts. Uh, she, uh, the current staff member who is in that position, travels to all four courts and assists in security in all four courts. Her salary is put under our budget, basically for the auditor's offices purposes, as well as to keep things simple in terms of payment of that salary, rather than pulling from four different budgets. And then the defense council budget is the number that it is in our budget because that include, encompasses and includes Superior Three's, uh, pauper council, defense council, as well as a portion of Superior One. Uh, so again, that is, that is explaining again, the, uh, the numbers as they are there. Um, so based on the caseload that we receive, based on the high-volume nature of the court as well as the addition of small claims, I would ask that you approve the budget as tendered, uh, with the cuts as shown. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Aldrich. Uh, you know, we had a nice conversation. You realize we have four judges with, uh, a senior judge here, uh, who's been on the bench since, uh, twenty-twenty-one? Is that fair? And it's quite a, quite a changeover. Um, I'm gonna, uh, recommend to the council, obviously with the judge's submission here of these numbers, to take these. And, uh, if you want to get down to it, we can just, we could just help you out, Tori, and do that. So, Mr. Aldrich, thank you. Does anybody else, I'm not trying to take over, Mr. Chairman, anyone else want to say something to Mr. Aldrich?
I just want to say thank you for being proactive and looking at your budget, and I mean, I think it's very appreciated amongst us, all of you judges.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Um, so, and you did a great job of keeping them in order. So office supplies on page seventy-eight. Where am I at? I gotta get my bearings here. Uh, office supplies will go down to three-thousand-five-hundred. Next line down, office machine supplies, three thousand.
So I think that's different than what he presented, unless I'm not looking at it correctly.
I'm, I'm following.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the first two on the right from the new proposal.
Okay, jury meals will go down to five hundred. Uniforms, uniforms and clothing will go down to five hundred. Court. Court-appointed doctors, uh, professional services will go down to three thousand. Equipment maintenance contract will go down to one thousand. Okay. Equipment lease will go down to two thousand. Travel and mileage will go down to one-thousand-five-hundred. Dues and subscriptions will go down to a thousand. Repair of furniture and equipment will go down to a thousand. Office and equipment from twelve hundred to a thousand. Unified law library from?
No, I think unified law library was, well, no, office, sorry. All right, so office was to a thousand?
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's machinery, that one. Yep, thank you. And that will be just a thousand, so take off a zero on unified law library. And, uh, and those are the numbers.
It's going, it's going down to one thousand.
Yeah, going down to a thousand.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman? I know we've still got Health Department notes that Mrs. Cox.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple more.
Um, real quick, can you check jury supplies? Because I just want to make sure that it's, that remained eight hundred.
Yep.
It did. Okay, perfect. Okay. I thought when someone was reading it that he cut it, and I want to make sure he did not.
The jury meals.
I'm gonna skip all the way down, not all the way, but to probation. Mr. Bendy met with us.
Page?
I'm sorry. Probation's on page ninety-four, and then we'll go to one oh eight. Let's start with ninety-four. He emailed us reductions, uh, because they received a grant, and because of the reductions, I, I've done some math, and, uh, I think we have, uh, the numbers here.
And, and just for future reference on, on cuts like this, uh, Mr. Bendy did inform us that he expects that in some future year, in the not-too-distant future, um, these grants are not going to be available anymore, and we'll have to make the decision about where to cover these costs from. these grants are not going to be available anymore and we'll have to make the decision about where to cover these costs from. So this, these costs may not, or these cuts may not be available in future budgets, so.
Okay, so there were three line items that will reduce the general fund, but let me start with those. Wages longevity goes down from 2,700 to 2,200.
That's already there.
Oh.
Wages were adjusted.
They are adjusted, yeah.
Yeah, based off.
Based off the meeting?
From September 12.
Okay.
Wages were adjusted.
Okay. The wages probation officer, that line item amount ending in numeral eight-one. Did we make an adjustment on that one? We did. Yep, yep, we did. Good, good. Okay. Okay. Page 108. Let's double-check those numbers real quick. If I can find it. 108 and 109, I've got, I've got some reductions here.
Which, which department are we in?
Sure, we're in Administrative Probation Fees, Adult Probation Fund number 2,000.
That one, 108. Those adjustments that were sent were wages and that was part of the recommendation, so those are already.
That's, okay, good. All right. That's all for me. Mrs. Cox is gonna take over the Health Department numbers.
We met with Sandy. And based on the projected revenues, we needed to make some cuts on Fund 1159, which is, page, I don't have a page number on the bottom.
I've got 113, yeah.
Okay, yeah, 113. And so we, in order to get her budget within her projected revenues, we are gonna on, well, I have two of three, so I don't think it's 113, I think it's the next page. Professional Services. So at the top is Office Supplies and then it goes down to Professional Services. It was 15,000, we're gonna cut that to 5,000.
So, yeah, you're on 114.
Okay, page 114. And then the very bottom, Unsafe Building is going from 10,000 to 200. And that should get her very close. It's under, just a fuzz under what her projected estimated revenues are.
You said 2,000 or 200?
200.
200, okay.
So we are cutting 19,800 off of her budget.
Okay.
Looks good.
You're cutting that down to $200? Okay, on the unsafe board.
So that's separate from what you guys do? You've got the unsafe buildings.
Yeah, but there's a certain amount that comes forward. Sandy, you want to clarify that?
We haven't used anything in that fund, I mean, or not a significant amount. And we do have other funds in our 1161, we can pull if needed.
Because on that unsafe board of which I'm on there, you know, we do expend money. And we, I know we have our own fund, but.
I was gonna say, I think it comes from another fund, because see, a few looking years past, in 2023, $71.65 was spent. And in 2022, $64.22 was spent.
Okay, now, correct. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is an issue that you would have with a septic on a property or something like that, you would have faith handle that. And where would that money come from? If it's coming from the Health Department, that little amount would come from you or are you gonna bring it to our board?
No, we, we would utilize it out of 1161.
Okay. As long as there's some there. Because we have a lot of issues in this county.
Yeah, 1161 should be pretty healthy unless, yeah.
We want to make sure because that committee's very active.
Yeah. All right. Any additional cuts, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Cox?
Are you in balance now with that? Is that you or somebody?
Yeah, yeah, we're under the estimated revenue.
Anything else?
Oh, I had a question for you, Sandy. On a, we had, what fund was it? There was Fund 1161 for Clerical, 16,000. And originally, when you had, you had written in, of course, is that, is that indeed for clerical?
It would be for clerical.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Because I know you had written in some different things on your, on your budget that you had handwritten and just trying to cross over and make sure.
Because there was nothing there before.
Right, so, okay, cool.
Okay.
Oh, and just so you know, she is attempt, she's going to be setting up an OB clinic. Do you want to talk about the OB clinic? And she will probably be coming before, would it be a transfer, an additional appropriation next year?
In, in some ways, in some ways, that's gonna be dependent on other actions.
Other aspects, but she may be coming back for an additional appropriation because we had actually lined out, the public health nurse got zero. So she may be coming back for that, so we can utilize any public health nurses.
Right.
Bring more funds because she has tiers of things that she has to, has to meet in order to receive.
And then when we switched from the administrative assistant, I didn't intend for the current position she's in to go away. Hers was an additional position.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought. So there, I had put funding in there to cover both of those positions, but, so I may have to ask for that back as well.
Yeah.
The money's there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another question.
Yes.
Are you definitely gonna go to, oh, I don't hear a park over there for?
I sure hope so.
We don't know.
Well, because my concern though would be is the cost of the infrastructure to put that building into position to where it's actually usable for what your needs are.
Well, it's actually set up as a clinic already with seven exam rooms. So when you look at the cost of a build-out to an empty space versus a move-in-ready facility.
Yeah, but Sandy, we'd be delusional if we thought all of that's gonna be 100% match. I've done that before. I mean, you're gonna have to have some costs there to do some changing. I mean, no reflection on you, but I'm just saying that, you know, there are always unforeseen things. Even like when you move to that perfect house, there's gonna be things that need to change. So, you know, my just, my concern is I don't want you to be flat down to zero thinking everything's gonna work fine there when you're gonna, there will be expenses.
Well, correct, but it won't be a building that we own, it'll be a county-owned building, so.
Well, aren't you gonna participate in the purchase of this?
We, we are, but again, we won't, the Health Department will not own the building.
I know.
And I, I think.
But that's gonna fall back on us, so wherever that money needs to come from, it's gonna have to be there.
I think you put that in your budget. There's, there's stuff in this line item and budgets for, for renovations.
Mr. Harmon?
So she's gonna receive revenues of 260,000 above what she's expending out for this budget. So there's, there's room to do a lot of stuff for her. Plus you have, what, 400,000 in past grant funds, 350, 400?
About 350, yeah.
350, so.
And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure whoever is on the Board of Commissioners next year will make sure that you guys are fully involved in any purchase decision before.
I would hope so.
Before they go forward, so, yeah. All right. Anything else from any members on the 2025 budget before we move for ratification?
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I, I do have some questions, again with the Sheriff's Department and all of that, on the overtime wages. What is the, what is the reason why we have so much overtime that wouldn't hiring someone else be a better solution or a different solution if needed? On page 18 and then, and then again, even in Correctional, you have the Community Corrections Department as well is extremely high on their overtime wages as well.
I also had that question, Deb, because when we increase the hours, we thought we were going to.
Correct.
And I think Nicole, we were together. When we increase those hours to decrease the overtime.
Correct.
It doesn't kind of reflect that in here unless I'm reading this right.
So the, the sheriff is here. Matt, did you want to speak to that? The, the council's got some questions on your overtime budget. Would you be willing to come up?
Is that time and a half overtime or is that?
Well, I'd imagine it's time and a half overtime because they're working 40 hours now, yeah.
Because I thought, yeah, I thought we made that change from the 37 or whatever it was to 40.
What's the question over the overtime?
On the overtime itself, it's increasing. And, I mean, what is the reasons for this overtime? Is this, is this something that hiring someone else could possibly change this? I mean, last year when we brought in, moved it from 37 and a half to 40 hours a week, we were, we were told that it would probably help with reducing the overtime hours.
Are you in the Sheriff's budget or are you in the lit fund?
Both, both.
Okay. In the Sheriff's budget, the overtime actually went down $600 from what was paid last year, in 2024.
But what you're asking this year is still quite a bit then more over.
$600. Is that what you're saying? $600 was reduced from 2024 to 2025. Correct, but her question, as less I've missed it, is by increasing the 37 and a half to 40.
Supposed to decrease the.
Road officer's been 40 hours for, before I even became sheriff.
Okay, so this is the road officers?
Yes, this is the road officers. I misunderstood that.
I know, yeah.
And the lit fund.
Lit, that was the one that was the increase in the hours was the lit fund, not the, not the general fund.
The lit fund, we had, a year and a half ago, we had to take four full-time employees out of the 911 fund because it no longer supported it. Four employees with all the benefits, it's a half a million dollars people. Right. And also in the overtime is also our holiday pay. So it's a dual, it's a dual fund. It's not just overtime, it's to pay them to work holidays. We don't get holidays off at our office.
Correct.
Everybody works. So we have to pay them for working those days. So that's why the difference, that's a, you got four people added to that fund. Yes, the 40 hours did cut down on the exact overtime that we use. But adding the four people back to that fund, it, it just is what it is. You gotta, you know. I, I don't know where we're gonna go with the nine, with the, with the 911 fund. They haven't changed the amount that they put into that fund since before I was sheriff. It's the same amount every month. In fact, we just deposited it today, 46,000 something. So it's obviously, we did not know what we were doing. Because when we increased the hours, that did not offset that because of the moving of the people from one fund to another fund.
And, and those, those decisions were made at different times.
Absolutely, well, but you understand what I'm saying. And that's why the Personnel Committee was looking at this and we're saying, okay, we see that those wages have increased and the overtime has increased. So the question that Deb had, I think is very valid, that maybe we should have just had another person in there because that, the, the request here is $205,000, unless I'm misreading this.
Way to get to that clarification, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. And I'm, I'm looking forward to at our next Central Dispatch Board meeting to again, get to remind all of our other partners around the county just how much the council does to help support, to support public safety. Obviously, we added another half a million dollars onto, onto county funds to, to support dispatch.
You're absolutely correct. We're, we're, the county government itself is solely making up for the shortfall from the 911 funds, which is collected from everybody. But we're the only one paying it up.
Yep.
You know, so, yes, you're right. But we also need to reflect on the point that when that lit is going to expire and you're at that .25 and you now have this deficit and you're taking from the general fund and the other, where's that money gonna come from? So we need to be very serious about how we put that in motion as far as funding this operation. Because we need to fund everything. I agree. And Tim and I have had several conversations on that.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Again, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Going once, going twice. I will entertain a motion on the budget.
Before the motion, Mr. Chairman, if I could see.
We want to see the number before we approve it?
Aggregates. Is that the general in blue? So the general started at 16, 356, 260 and dropped down to 15, 653.
700,000 dollar difference.
508? And the special phones started at 42, 7? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's, that's total, that's total, yeah, yeah. Specials would be the, I gotcha, the difference of that. Let me just write that down though.
And, and just a reminder to everyone and to the public that there are 44 funds that make up the budget. So the general fund and then the 43 special funds. The cash balances in all of those funds stay with those funds.
Okay. All gen.
So it looks like we just nudged over $2 million of total cuts. $2,4023 is what I'm showing?
Yep. The revenues projected for the general are roughly 17.8 million. I know there's Form 4B, I think that has that projection, but, and that does not include any special distribution, supplemental distribution. So I like where we're at, Mr. Chairman?
So you're, you're showing projected revenues without any special distributions of 17.8 million dollars?
Yep.
And we're budgeting 15.
2.1 million-ish over, yeah, absolutely. Revenues exceed expenses by 2.1 million. I will make a motion to approve the 2025 budget as calculated.
I'll second.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Harmon and a second by Mrs. Cox to approve the budget as what we're seeing right there in front of us here. Any additional debater comments from the council? All right, yeah, I will, I will echo your comments there, Mr. Chairman. It, it looks like we are continuing to meet our goal of having that annual surplus of, of, of $2 million. We're gonna be in healthy territory at the end of this year and it looks like at the end of next year as well as projected.
And can I put a plug for my office in there? I just want to thank Tori and all my staff. Round work on these budgets that nobody sees and everybody has stepped up to help out where we've needed to be pulled off for the budget.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
And I would like to echo that, Madam Auditor, and also to thank you and Tori especially for, I think the process has gone, gone very well this year and you guys have helped make that easy. So thank you. All right. So the, the motion is on adoption of the 2025 Marshall County Budget, Ordinance 2024-21. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and the budget is adopted. All right. Public input. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address the council on any matter whatsoever? All right, any last parting thoughts from the council?
Henry Freddie Jr.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion by Mr. Fostich and a second by Mrs. Johnson for adjournment. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.